Um, presentation uh by uh for the Bainbridge Solar Project by Tim Gorley. Did I say that correctly, Tim?
Yeah, Tim Gorley, yes.
Gorley, all right, well, we don't wanna, we don't want you to have to sit through our hour-long meeting and then present, so we're gonna, we're gonna jump right to you on the agenda.
Perfect, thank you.
Real quick, just some overview for everybody, hopefully you had a chance to read through the information that was sent the other day by Jenna. There are four applications for pilots, and just for clarification, because a lot of the numbers look the same, they are four separate pilots uh on multiple PAX map numbers, uh so they are separate projects, just keep that in mind as Tim is talking today, okay? All right, Tim, uh welcome to the uh meeting of the Shenango County IDA. We appreciate you jumping on today, and I'm gonna turn the floor over to you if you could just give us a, a high-level overview of the project, and then uh we'll, we'll probably have some questions for you, okay?
Sure thing, sure thing. So, my name is Tim Gorley, I'm president of track engineering. Um, I was asked to uh present to you guys today by my clients who can't make it. Talk to you today about the Bainbridge Solar Project that we're working on, and as you had said, that this is four projects, basically four projects of same magnitude um divided and spread out on the old Borden Chemical Site in the town of Bainbridge and the village Bainbridge. We have been working with the town and village, uh we submitted application, the land development application, or a special use permit application back in August of 2022, and have been working through the process of uh and did receive our special use permits uh in February of this year. Um, after that, we have applied through for the, for the pilot agreements which were here today, and we're working with NISAG right now on our uh interconnection between the, the solar fields and the um substation and the improvements required there. What we're looking at doing is, the project area itself is approximately seventy-five, or excuse me, seventy-six acres of fenced-in area that will encompass the majority of the former Borden property. Um, we have entered into a lease agreement with John Payne, who purchased the whole Borden facility. The Borden facility is still listed as a DEC Superfund Site, uh brownfield site, so hence one of the, the um brownfield requirements on that site have prohibited, um due to the, the fire out there and, and the uh, the destruction that with the old, the old Borden facility, they have buried a lot of that waste on site, there are PCB contaminations on site. DC, when they designated a Superfund Site, there's a deed restriction on that entire property now that prohibits any type of residential housing or any type of agricultural farmland use. Basically, you can't grow any crops there for sale, uh due to the potential presence for contaminants. So, uh Mr. Payne had purchased the property from DEC. Um, DEC is still undergoing some of the ongoing monitoring of that site, they have monitoring wells, they're doing annual monitoring, that is not our responsibility, it's part of the DEC closeout of the Superfund Site. We have been in communications with DEC about changing the use of the property from vacant land, um basically unusable, unusable property, to uh present to them the, the potential for a solar farm, and they are okay with that, they have acknowledged that um it's a, a better use now for the property, um given that the deed restrictions that are on there. For instance, some of the things that we have to be concerned about is, whenever the site was demolished and, and the material buried on site, that, those materials were identified as hotspot areas or waste management units, so in our development and construction, we have to identify those areas, and essentially, those are areas we can't dig, so we've got to do special um weighted ballasted blocks for our solar panels. So in other words, we can't dig anything in that area with the, to prevent any type of redistribution or digging up of any type of waste material. So, there are some challenges to the site, but given the location, uh the location, the, the uh infrastructure for the substation and the potential future use of the site, a, a solar field makes sense to put here, um it's low-impact development, um not a whole lot of grading needs to be done. As you said, we went through, we, we reviewed the project with both the village and the town, received those project approvals, um and looking forward to trying to, to get this thing kicked off and, and start construction sometime in the near future, uh pending all the uh pilot agreements and finalization of some, some things with NISAG. So, just speaking in, in very round numbers, they kind of identified in the application, yes, we have four unique projects out here, each one is considered community solar under the five megawatts, so we're, we're coming in at four point nine-five megawatts. Reason being, some of the use of our inverters, by the time we get to the inverters count of like thirty-three inverters per unit, it works out to four point nine-five. So that keeps us in the community solar program through NISAG, and the land there lends to having four, you, four unique projects. Um, each project, again, is four point nine-five megawatts, the equipment that is utilized for each project is, is pretty much the same all the way through, there may be a couple panels here or there that are short just to do to, to uh size and, and size limitations on the area, but for the most part, that is why all the application documents are, are showing the same um, same value for the project, the fourteen million, just because everything is pretty much the same throughout. Moving forward, uh we're looking to do the project always one phase, it will not be phased in, as we'll do one now, one later, one in the future, but once we start working on it, we'll be doing everything at once. That would coincide with the connection with the uh NISAG substation. Um, for those of you who are familiar with Bainbridge, um the, the Borden Site is essentially in the, it would be the northeast or north-northeast side of this town, and the substation we're tying into is on the south-southwest side of town, essentially at the pool, as you come across the bridge off the interstate, it'll be on the left-hand side, so we're working with uh how we're doing the connection there with NISAG now to finalize that, so again, with the connection we have to do, NISAG wants to do everything at once as well, so that's what we're coordinating with them. That's a, a brief, high-level overview of it, again, we're looking for uh four projects at once, the Su- Superfund Site lends to a solar project because of the uh reuse of the property, um that's already deed restriction, no, no, and, no residential uses on it, and no agricultural farmland due to the potential pollutants on it, they don't want anything farmed. Um, in our application, we've identified that, one of the things that we have asked for is, due to the fact we're doing four projects of similar nature, all at the same time, we would uh request or consideration to reduce the application fee from one percent to half percent for each project, um that, that is something we'd like to try to do to, to uh work on our tight margins to make the project happen and, and being on a Superfund Site, so that's something we would ask the board to consider as part of our application. In general, that's my brief overview of it, um any specific questions I can try to answer or see what we need to do and move forward, so.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Does the board have any questions at this point in time for, for Tim?
No.
I was gonna ask, you're, you're on the, on the Borden Manufacturing Site there, is there any remediation that has to be done before you begin this solar project?
So the, so to answer the question is, there are certain remediation requirements on the site, so as I said, the, the, um, we are not developing where the buildings were, or like the building foundations were, those have all been demolished, and those are being retained by the property owner, John Payne, for his use. So, in the northern part of the fields where there's a buried material, if, for instance, um if we are in an unidentified hotspot area, there's four hotspot areas that where the DEC has identified, uh buried waste, if we go in there and we dig in that hotspot area, for example, if we dig a fence post, I mean, because we're gonna fence the entire site in, so we have areas that we're gonna essentially put in a uh chain-link fence, and where we dig material out, we have to essentially, when we remove that material, we have to, I don't wanna say separate it, but we have to hold it and test it for essentially PCBs and formaldehyde, which are the two identified parameters that DEC has, that if they come back hot on those materials, that's gonna be considered, uh I don't wanna say hazardous waste, but that's gonna be considered a waste material that we have to properly dispose of off-site. If it comes back clean, then we're allowed to dispose of it on-site. So, to answer your question is, DEC has done some remediation work, they have um the monitoring wells out there, but we are not responsible for cleanup, we're responsible to make sure that anything we do does not further enhance any contamination of the site, so hence, if we put a shovel in the ground in a hotspot area, we're, we're required to test that to make sure it's in compliance with the DEC-approved site plan for remediation. So, in all likelihood, um we will be digging some areas just because of, for our, our security fencing, we will have some ongoing testing, um we have been in communication with DEC on that, um and we're setting up the protocols to do that. One of the things that we had to do early on in our project was, the um, I would call it the backfield where we're working, um was a field at one time, they buried the waste, and now they have material growing up, or they have brush, trees growing up there. When we cut the trees down, DEC requires us to test the trees to make sure that they weren't leaching any type of contaminants. Once we got the trees chipped, we're, we've, we're waiting on lab results to come back from that now, to figure out if those chips are essentially hot that we have to get rid of, or we can just disperse them across the site, so. So, long, my long answer and my, my short answer is, um we're not required to do anything, but we're required to doing any type of ongoing monitoring with earth disturbance to make sure that we're not contributing more to the problem.
Jason, what is the projections for labor for uh full-time, permanent, or temporary employees that you bring to the site?
So, we've identified that whenever we go move forward with a project like this, we uh send out our piece or request for proposals from um engineering procurement and construction contractors, and we tried to identify local contractors who can do the work, however, a lot of times with solar work, it's specialized work that the crew travels around, and usually we get an out-of-state contractor to come in, it's in their best interest to try to find local forces for it, but with our past history on it, there's not a whole lot of local forces that can do the type of work, or whether the contractor will find it themselves. So, during the, the temporary aspect, we will probably have um out-of-states or non-local people come in to do the work, um we can try to make it do the best they can, but i- it's hard to have on a, a very, I would say, temporary basis for a project like this to get something. Once construction's complete, there will be ongoing maintenance of the facility, um we will retain local contractors to do that ma- maintenance work, um in terms of mowing and upkeep of the site, uh local electricians to handle any type of problems that will come on. We are essentially required by our town approvals and emergency response plan, we've gotta have somebody local to handle any type of emergency or come out to see the site. With our projects right now, that we have projects in Bainbridge, a couple other projects in the Binghamton, Ougio area, and uh town in the Tyler County, so local, I mean, we'll probably have somebody within an hour to be there, so whether they're gonna be stationed in, in the Shenango County or somewhere in Broom County is more than likely just because of centered on that. So we would typically have one to two people on our staff to be local technicians, and then hire out some local people in the area to handle more of uh the, the maintenance aspects of things, so um overall, I mean, in our application, we, I mean, we didn't try to sugarcoat it, more likely that not a whole lot of jobs specifically because of the uh, the technical expertise of it, but local, local people down the road will be used for more of the maintenance issues.
And if I read it right, Tim, it's about ten percent is what you've said will be?
Correct, yeah.
So a lot of the twelve million, eleven and a half million bucks, ten percent will be sourced, so sourced within the state, right?
Correct, because I mean, correct.
And how do you estimate, how did you get your estimate of fifty percent of the power will stay in the county? What makes you, what makes you think that that much of it will remain, and how do we determine that?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you say the question again?
It, it says in the application that you estimate fifty percent of the electricity will remain in the county, if I'm reading that right, at the beginning of the application. So I'm trying to understand, on page, where did I see it? I'll go back to it. Page two, section eight, fifty percent would say, I just don't know how we, I didn't know that that was, I learned, that's possible to estimate half the electricity, because what we've heard in other presentations to the county is that the majority of the electricity goes out on the grid and is sold outstate.
I mean, that's a good question, because I don't know for exact, a hundred percent, because I'm not the electrical guy, but I understand your question. I know a lot of the stuff that we're looking at is the community solar involvement, to try to get local people to dot buy into that, so whether they, whether people participate or not, and we're actually getting billed that way, but I know that we are putting all of our power into that substation that's at the south-southwest side of town, which is, has a twenty, I think it has come into a forty-six KB line that goes across the river, and then into the old, to the old coalpower, coalfire power plant distribution center, so, I mean, it's more likely it'll get in the grid, how much stays local, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
That's okay, I'm just trying in case anybody asks, justification for, a pilot would be local benefit to the local county, right? So, that's, let's just, I was just trying to make sure I understood that.
And, and again, that's why we, I mean, we're in the NISAG, the New York Sun Program for the community solar, so, I mean, the intent there is to try to keep it local, but again, as you know, once it gets in the grid, it's gonna go to demand, so.
Makes sense.
So one of the things we have to do, Tim, is we have to put together cost-benefit analysis when it comes to, what are the current property taxes, school taxes, versus what would they be uh on that property if we did grant a pilot on those properties, if we did grant a pilot on them? Have you guys already done that by any chance?
With different projects or this project?
This project.
No, I'm not aware of that on our, on our finance guys, I mean, what we found is, I mean, we probably right now have various projects in different counties, and every one of them has a different take on it, the IDA, uh whether they're going a high number, low number, I mean, it, it, it's, it varies across the board, so.
All right, I'm just, we, I didn't want to duplicate services, if you guys already done it, I was gonna ask you for a copy of yours, uh so.
I understood, I, I mean, honestly, I don't know, because I'm not in the finance team, I'm on the engineering, the, the site layout, but I mean, I can ask the question, but I'm not aware of anything, because I'm looking at the application, I think back on page eleven, where we just put in the duration and a lot of the numbers are blank at this time, so.
Yeah, that's actually, and that's, that's our responsibility to fill out, but in the past, they have already, some have already done that, so it just helps us, that's all.
Okay.
You mentioned that um the reason you broke it into four different applications was to keep it under five megawatts and be able to be in the NISAG program. What's the benefit for your organization for doing that? Is there a benefit to, to your organization?
It, it keeps us in the um, the five megawatt is, is the, the cutoff for community solar, so whether we do twenty megawatts or five, if we, if we're broken up and meet the criteria that, we, we adhere or conform to the New York Sun Program to get into that.
And so what's, and what's that designation allow, I think is what Taylor's saying, by giving that community solar designation, what's the difference? I don't understand the difference either. If you weren't community solar, you would, that would mean what? And if you are, that means what?
I think it, it's on the, on the backside of it, when we apply for an, another incentive program through New York Sun, that's what gets us in the door there.
Gotcha. So it just comes down to the incentives offered at these days as well, that?
Gotcha.
Yes.
Makes sense. Trying to maximize the grants that are available to develop the site.
Correct.
And the reason the, the build-out numbers are all so relatively close is because each site is very close in size? And you mentioned that you were gonna do like one this year, one next, so on and so forth, or is it all at once?
No, more than likely, when we mobilize the site, we will construct everything at once.
Oh, okay.
So, I, to answer your question, no, I think, I think somewhere in the app, is it a phased project? The answer is no, that it's, once we go, our contractor will be there for the duration to, to finish it out, so.
So let me ask you a question, and I'm sure it's all completely legal, but there's no, there wouldn't be anything viewed as they're trying to circumvent things by trying to keep it under five megawatts right there because of the proximities and things like that, we as an IDA would be?
No, no, I mean, well, I mean, we have, there's other restrictions with uh the parceling and the, the lot numbers that we have adhered to, to do that, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying, this isn't our first time doing it this way, I mean, what we, what, what we're looking at is stay in the New York Sun Program, and given the fact that this is a brownfield site, seventy acres or so, we're trying to maximize the uses of that site, and to do so, we've had to break it down, multiple projects, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tim? Well, Tim, you're off the, you're off the hot seat, uh appreciate you taking the time today on such short notice, uh you kind of gave us an overview, um we'll continue to have discussions about this moving forward, we got some, we got some blanks to fill in here on the paperwork that are our responsibility, uh we'll get to that uh as soon as possible, um and then uh continue to move forward with this at this time.
Okay, I mean, just a couple follow-up questions on my end for you guys then is, obviously, I made my presentation here today, what is your timeline to act upon? Are you acting on it later in the meeting, or is that something we'll see the next meeting? Just um, just from a scheduling standpoint of, will you guys get back in touch with us, or do we have to go through another meeting, things like that?
Uh, at this point in time, you wouldn't be required to, to come to anything else at this point, uh we'll put together our numbers and then ship all the paperwork off to our attorneys uh for review, um and then we'll, we'll, hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have a step to make a motion and approve or vote on.
Okay.
You know, it, I won't lie to you, this is not the fastest process in the world, we meet once a month, um you know, there's a lot of back and forth, you know, if a question comes up at the next meeting on something in the, the contracts drawn up by the attorneys, we will move forward, we will table it, we will go back, it could push another month. You know, our, our intention is not to hold these projects up if we can avoid it, uh however, we are very, 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 very careful um when it comes to uh uh getting into these pilots, uh we do try to communicate uh significantly with the townships, the county, and the school districts. Uh, New York State law now requires specific communication between IDAs and school districts specifically, um so that, that's not something that was in, in the process in the past, so again, that communication, you know, how long does that take now?
Understood.
Right, so, school, usually the school finance directors are pretty quick to tell us what they want, what they wanna see, and how they'd like it stepped out, um but uh, you know, we'll move as fast as we can, but not in haste.
Understood, and I guess to follow up on that, um I understand that, as you said, this meeting, you're, we'll discuss it and then get with your attorney to move forward, possibly discuss it the next meeting, will we receive any correspondence before the next meeting to review that, or just to see what's going on?
And yeah, Tim, you'll be kept in the loop, a- as we get information back from our attorney, we share it with you so that your attorneys can review it as well.
That's, I guess that's my question, I don't wanna come next month and, oh, you guys, here it is, and take it or leave it type thing, that um we'll move it.
And again, you work with corporate attorneys, you know you're at their backing call as well.
Sorry, I understand, but at least if I know it's coming, I can try, if we're paying the bill, we can force that a little bit to move it along, so, but um, okay, um, moving forward, we'll look to that, and then my only other question is, is with our request for reduced application fee, at what point will we either yea or nay that?
That would be in that initial paperwork with the contract from our attorney.
Perfect, I just need to know, because I know my people are gonna ask, oh, they left us hanging, when are we gonna know something? And that's, I just need to know when so I can keep them from bugging everybody else of what's happening.
Big part of our discussion today.
Okay, perfect, perfect, all right, well, I appreciate the time here, um I think we have uh communications there to get back in touch through Jenna, and we'll go from there, so.
Great, thank you, Tim.
Okay, all right, thank you much.
Appreciate you. Hello? All right. So we'll go back to the agenda at this point, and then when we get back down to new business, we'll discuss this further, okay? IDA emissions statement is in here, but I know we revamped it, is it on here? No, so we'll wait, we'll wait that reading, because I don't have the number right. Need a motion to approve the minutes of August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes? So, okay, need a second?
Second.
Second by Martha, any uh discussion, corrections, omissions? Hearing none, we'll vote, Corey aye.
Ryan aye, Dino aye.
Woodford aye, Bert aye. Financial report of August thirteenth, birthday twenty twenty-three, Kathy Joe.
Okay, so after our last meeting last month, um High Bridge, was it High Bridge we were waiting on? One of the ones that were still on the account, uh accounts receivable, they did pay.
And that was one fifty-ish?
Yeah, High Bridge was a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and then the Norbit solar payment came in of a hundred and forty, almost a hundred and forty-two thousand, so the, those two payments came in, I think we were also waiting on um Puckett, and that one came in as well, of twenty-four thousand, so I moved that money to the money market, so the money market is over one million.
Did Jamie Reynolds reach out to you?
Nope. And then um page four of the financial statement of activities, the interest income we got for August is twenty-five hundred, so our year-to-date is um twelve thousand, five eighty. And then for the net activity for the month of August is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Any questions on the financial at this point?
Uh, the question is, do you guys, would you guys want somebody to come in and present on the money market to us, how we're doing, because I have Aiden Hannan coming to do that for the DCC, I haven't, I haven't thought about it, we just signed some paperwork over there about, you know, the distributions and stuff like that within the accounts, is the idea where we want that, we would want that.
So, if you wanna give me five minutes, I can kind of, I can do that now, Aiden Hannan's a little different, he's wealth management, uh we're talking deposit products versus wealth management, um so what I wanted Jamie Reynolds to do is reach out to Kathy Joe and just give her an overview of the program, uh it's actually called Intrify now, but it was called ICS, and ICS stands for insured cash sweeps, okay? So right now, the money's all liquid, sitting in a money market at MBT Bank, when it comes to municipal funds, a bank has to collateralize all those dollars overnight, so it's very expensive to a bank, so FDIC insurance covers up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of that million, everything else is covered and protected by the bank itself through collateralization process. So right now, the money market's paying three percent, and part of that is because it, it's really costing us much more than that, because we have to protect the municipal funds overnight, okay? So what Intrify slash ICS does is, it's a program that allows with the, the municipalities' participation to farm those funds out, and in two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar clips to multiple banks, okay? So then every dollar is protected under FDIC, so a million bucks, so you're gonna have, you're gonna need at least five banks to cover that, that, that FDIC coverage, so those funds will ship out to five different banks, potentially six, so on and so forth. In exchange for participating in that program, what the bank does is, it, it gives you a much higher interest rate, because it's now costing us much less to house those funds. The, the money's still liquid, you can still get at it within a day, um it's transfer process, not only do you see things on our online banker, but there is a portal uh direct with the ICS Intrify program that allows you to monitor those dollars at all times, transfer money back, transfer more money into the program should you continue to, to grow your dollars. That rate right now for communities is four point eight-five percent, so with an APY of four point eight nine, or four point nine six, sorry, almost five percent return on your money, whereas we're getting three percent now, um which is equating to over two-thousand dollars a month in interest, now imagine that at five.
Is there any risk going to us?
No, it actually eliminates all risk, because every single dollar is below the FDIC threshold of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. I have presented this to numerous townships, villages. I have presented this to numerous townships, villages, school districts. We do have a number of school districts in our area that do participate in it. We're getting more and more townships and villages to participate in it because the rate is so appealing. The initial fear is, well, my money's not down the street anyway. That is not true. MBT Bank still technically holds your money. You're still depositing with MBT Bank, just farming it out overnight, essentially. If you're familiar with a sweep account, think of it kind of that way, right? So it goes out overnight, comes back. In this case-
Upsetting risk.
Right.
Upsetting risk.
In this case, it goes out and it doesn't come back till you say, come back, okay? It's a great program. It is some paperwork to set up, I won't lie. There is a contract that's about 20 pages long. However, only about three pages of that is actual stuff that needs to be filled out. If there is a bank that you don't want to participate with, and let's face it, this day and age, there are banks that are of higher risk than other banks. So there may be something on a list that you don't want for you to choose what banks not to utilize for that. However, again, it's under 250, so it's covered by FDIC. You know-
They're MBT-like since then because they have to hold less collateral to-
Oh, absolutely.
That's why, so they have more liquidity for them and they're able to make sense.
Yep. I've heard this before. Is this a new program for MBT? It is not. We have been participating for quite some time in this. However, it didn't matter really before. There wasn't that fear, right? Also, interest rates, you know, were very bad. So it didn't matter if it was really with us or them. If ICS just really offered you that FDIC protection at that point in time, but it wasn't offering a much better interest rate. It wasn't an interest rate that really- It turned into an investment.
Got your attention.
Yeah. So it wasn't such a stress point. Now it is, right? When you're talking almost 5%, that's a huge differential.
2% of the million is a lot of money.
Yeah. So it's been around a long time, we've participated. Not every bank participates in this program, but yeah. It's, like I said, the money's still with MBT Bank. So one of the things I've heard is, well, we voted that you're our bank of deposit. I'm going to need to know what everyone in those banks are so that we can vote out those as banks of deposit. You're still our bank of deposits. You don't need to go out and do that. You get statements from the Intrify. It's at your fingertips all the time. So I'm yet to hear of any sort of negative. And I've looked, I've had people ask. I don't know of a negative in this program, other than the paperwork that you have to fill out initially.
So is there something we should do formally behind us or to consider it? Should I have Jamie Reynolds come and make a formal presentation and then we make a word of thanks to her recommendation? Should that what I should do?
It's up to you. Jamie's going to come in and probably tell you almost exactly what I just told you.
I'm good with that.
Yeah. I don't know what else he would offer up other than other opportunities for other things, but it's- I know that we have to do our due diligence, but is MBT competitive with other banking institutions in this field? I would say so, yeah. I mean, based upon, we do a lot of-
There's the interest rate.
Yeah, we do a lot of market research and, you know, so.
So Brian, I think it would be great to have Jamie because it's someone representing the bank, talking to us, approving the opportunity rather than our private president presenting to us.
Yes.
So I think that would be a cleaner for records and-
So it creates an arms length?
Yes.
Right?
And then we'll make sure that we also have, you know, we'll try to look forward here to some chapters and meetings. So Jenna, if you could, please put that on the agenda. We'll invite Jamie Reynolds from MBT. I'll give you some contact information.
And as soon as possible, because that sounds like-
Yeah, we'll do it for October 4th.
What happens if the interest rate change on that?
If anybody in the world can truly predict that, they are very, very likely. So it's just like any other variable rate deposit product. So, you know, as rates continue to increase, there's a chance that rate could increase. And it's not, it's not a fixed rate. So, you know, rates go up, your rate goes up. If something horrible happens to the rates, take a rapid decline, so is this.
The money market is a fixed interest rate, right?
It is not. It is variable. All deposit products other than CDs are variable rate. CDs are fixed because it's a specific time period. So you're mitigating risk for both the customer and the bank at that point in time. Yep.
If you keep going, I'm going to have you explain inverted curves to me here, all right?
So right now, we're in inverted.
Because I know you can do it.
No, no, you just got my old hodge and add something because I heard you can't do it. But yeah, I think it's a great idea that Jamie come in, present to you guys. Then you could potentially make a motion to enter into a contract for the ICS and I would be able to say at that point.
Perfect.
That's excellent information.
Good start.
All right. Still have the financial statements. Need a motion to approve the financial statements?
Some more?
Need a second? Second by Corey? Dan? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Corey, aye.
Ryan, aye. Dino, aye.
Woodford, aye. Bert, aye. Checks. Just look it down through the checklist. Looks like it's that time of year again where we get to pay our insurance. Taxes to Baybridge Guildford Central School. I assume that's on the building for everything Vaynerly?
Yes.
Okay. We can reimburse all those, right?
No, that is an IDA expense.
Okay. And we built that into the lease to cover those dollars originally, I mean?
That I'm not sure. I know everything Vaynerly will reimburse all utilities, but not the insurance and taxes. So I don't, I don't know if that is built into the monthly rent payment.
The insurance lease somehow qualifies for it. I think it is. I think I remember having that conversation with the attorney that we needed to cover those expenses in our lease, monthly lease dollar amount.
They, I think their lease is like 1,500 a month, yes.
Yeah.
And just so you guys know, he's come back before. I know he presented to you this board a couple of months ago. The tires and his partner came back again. They're trying to expand and they're also, because they're trying to relocate that. He owns a production company down in Texas. That's where he hit before he started this, when the world shut down. Covid, the production company shut down. He's actually been in touch with a couple of local realtors. So hopefully that investment continues to pay dividends. It seemed like to do that all up here now, but that's how they run it. He's looking for a gigantic building. So he's had 80,000 square feet. That's what he's got the realtors looking for, so.
What was the production?
Music and sound and different acts. Like he would have a group production company, like soundstage and lights for concerts, like.
A little rhapsody for concert. True production, right? Not many factory productions.
Blues, blues festival.
Yeah, that kind of stuff, exactly, right? Exactly, yeah. He did sound, that was his big.
Any other question? Need a motion to approve the August checks?
Some more?
Need a second? What were you saying? Any, RCB? Any corrections, omissions, discussion?
Just if we can clarify at the next meeting, the lease, if it's going, because I don't think that's part of that discussion. The question that they had about whether the insurances are covered, maybe we'll be good to have a true clarification.
Okay.
Okay. Good. We'll vote. Corey, aye.
Ryan, aye. Dino, aye.
Woodford, aye. Bert, aye. ED report?
I'll be brief because we want to discuss the Bayridge project, I assume. DRI update, eight non-projects are on track. One that we're showing up is not because of the COVID. I have not been re-engaged with Julie Sweet to understand from New York State what will be done with that money, but I know being technically to keep it in one of the projects that's flooded. Our projects that we're responsible for here under the DCC are moving along well. Jenna's done a nice job and continuing to keep things moving with the consultant there. That, if you remember, is a small project grants for about $340,000 to be able to give to buildings, to do outside renovations with, to improve the beautification. And there's certain specific requirements that are, are given different weights for the criteria. We've got a local planning committee that's met. We've got a consultant that we've engaged. They've been through the process. The applications went out yesterday. So everybody within the DRI got their applications available to them. Yesterday, the other $200,000, if you remember, it was 600 total, three, four years available for projects. 60 consultants that are helping us with this project. 200 for an art project and/or art projects that will help beautify the area and tie that all together. So that's all going on, going well, the ones that we're responsible for here. The other update that you guys know is we have that building across the street that the DCC owned at one time. And I'm happy to say that we no longer own it. That process, it was intended to transfer that property differently. We went through the appropriate steps to put that through a bid. We received a qualified offer for it from Principal Zat, who was the ones that were intending, they were the only, they were the ones that were intending to put the hotel together in the first place. It's a cash offer so that the DCC will no longer own that building. It will stay on the tax rolls and they will, I assume, I'm going to get, I just looked at the, I told you that was fact. I assume they will apply for a pilot at some point because they plan to create 40 jobs. We had done some work previously. I had consultant Brian, who might be doing some research, Steve Harris. And he told me the pilot programs for hotels and other areas, he shared those with us and what that would look like. So I have a good understanding if they reach that point compared to other projects in the area. But the good news is for us, it's clean and they then now can start to talk to the state directly about the $5 million with the grants if they qualify. So that's good news. That project should continue to move forward. The only other other thing, yes, please?
Jenna, quite some time ago, we had gotten spreadsheets of what a pilot would look like potentially for the hotel. It had numbers, it had different pilots on different terms and different parameters. Can you please send that to the board? Just because it's been quite a while now and I want to make sure now that we're starting. And there's nothing saying they'll apply for a pilot, but if I was a veteran man, my money would be on, they're going to. This will kind of give you some background at what we would be looking at to start with. And of course, RC never saw those, so this will be a good opportunity for you to do this.
And I believe, I believe Barbara, Jenna, you guys can dig back probably three board meetings ago, I think it was, that we had that conversation with me. This is when we originally were talking about how we might transfer the building and so on and so forth. As a related topic, I had a conversation earlier that the DCC also owned a building next door to us, owns a building next door to us, the Cottage Bakery. This has some history to it. I'm assuming it's talking about how we see the local development corporation merged with this organization. Things got a little bit, I think, sometimes the missions got a little overlapped. They bought a building next door, they, our processors bought this building next door with the intention of being a pilot type thing. It was a nonprofit artist palette. It was supposed to be able to get up and running. Never quite made it. Transitioned somehow to this Cottage Bakery to a for-profit organization now. DCC owns the building. Real property tax laws, if it's a for-profit intention, you have to pay taxes. Doesn't matter who owns it, it matters what the intent is for. So you probably want to go back on the tax rolls in March. I think that's a bad idea. If you start to pay $13,000 again, we, the DCC, the overall organization. So how do we dispose of that building? Our lawyers said, I spoke with them again, first thing was we put it up for bid. We hoped that it would be accepted. Somebody would bid on it, they did. We can now go back and re-list it with our realtors again and try to market it. We've had a BPO to find out what we thought it was worth. They gave us an approximate offer of $190,000. We had it listed for 200 for months and nobody made us a single offer on it. So the consideration is what do we do with that? Let's think about it like from the IDA's perspective and say, okay, Brian and I, we're talking about, we could use another building like everything Vaynerly, another success story like that business. If we do anything else, could we use this build? Could the IDA use this building through something like that? Dominoes that keep falling. You got Paul Farnum that does in-motion design. I don't think they're going to want him in the basement of their hotel while he's doing printing. So I've already had some conversations. Could he go over here? If that's a difficult part for him because heavy equipment, it's a two-story thing. We'd have to do a lot of refurbishment, the work. Now, it doesn't mean he can't do the work. Could we get the building, do, he'd do the work because there's grants available through the city and Eric Skidmore Estate, revitalized Bjork, blah, blah, blah. Lots of moving parts. I'm going to explore that on behalf of the DCC. Tangentially, we'll bump into the IDA. The other thing I want to consider is this building here. We rent from Chris Hayes, wonderful member, we're going to talk about a little bit tonight. We'd like to stay in this building, but this building is, we'd like to stay downtown. This building's twice as big as what we need all the time. He's also charging half as much rent as he could if he repurposed the building. We're paying as much rent as we're charging for rent. Trying to figure out, is there something we should be doing over here where the chamber has a permanent location down? We don't need that whole big space. Is there a way to utilize that space effectively? Stay here for, you know, another year, give Chris time to think about what he's doing for this building. And rather than have him do something for us that might be temporary, we own a building. Why not consider what a permanent solution might look like for us? And I don't know, can something else stay on the other side? There's two beautiful storefronts. This building, we have to split and have it this way because of bathrooms and restrooms. That building, you could split it right down the middle because of the way it runs and the length of it and the way it's designed. We could go on one side, somebody else could go on. Just multiple things to do.
Which is it, Sally? Fishburne, Old Fishburne?
Yeah, it's Fishlands. Had the counter downstairs.
Same, same kind of place you-
Exactly, I saw that. Counter basement is an absolute mess. Is that in it? It's just a mess. But again, if we clean it up, we have a, we have a bunch of space that all the team cleaned out. They all cleaned out from storage and stuff. So we can, we need secured storage for our loan files and certain things like that. We could utilize the basement. They utilize part of it for some woodworking that one of the women's husband does over there. Tabitha's husband does some work. Right now, it's an odd arrangement and I'm not casting any aspersions, but someone from the DCC with a transition from the artist palette to the Cottage Bakery, there's no lease agreement. Cottage Bakery can't foot the full $1,600 bill themselves, so they sub-lap back to other people. We have no arrangements with any of those people. They have no written arrangements with her. There's liability issues, right? There's concerns for somebody to leave the back lap back there, right? I mean, if somebody falls and gets hurt going down the stairs, like, I'm not sure who's liable for what, right?
Well, I see.
Yeah, so I'm trying to clean all that up. When I first started out and I, and now I have a better handle on what we should do. We do the property disposition rules, the fact that we shouldn't even own real estate. The development corporation doesn't, our charters don't really prefer that. So I have to figure out what to do.
I'm still trying to figure out, did you stack a floor today?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
It's similar.
But we've done, and that's the, that's the difficult thing is we bought the building for 100 and, I think 140, and then we refurbished it for more than that, 180, to set it up like this. So we have a bunch of money into it. So my point is, okay, we've made this investment in this building and we're not going to recoup it based upon the prices that we put it up for March, right? So we could recoup it over the long term if we stay in it. If we, if we stay in it, right? I mean, it's a long-term investment and you said, I mean, there's ways you could do that. So then all we have, you'd build that, were you in it? You'd own it, right? And stop being that. And then it could come off the tax rolls because we'd be in it, right? So it'd be legitimate. Gives us a year to buy time with Chris because we just agreed to, he's been gracious again. I said, I know you guys don't know exactly what you're doing. I'll give you another year, same price so we can work together. And so he's been awesome, right? And so I said, okay, that buys us time. I'm going to talk to my boards and try to, as long as you guys think it makes sense. And maybe your role for the IDA in here, I'm just not sure what it is. I just want more people thinking about it than just me. Maybe somebody will have a good idea.
So let's talk about voices when we get a chance.
You gotta have my thumb up for whatever ideas you got, so.
On a confidential note, Volce is looking for a facility. We are applying for a huge grant that would establish like an entrepreneurial program for our students. And we cannot own property, we would leave. And the lease will be long-term, so that's-
I would love to work some of that. The other building that I know you guys are aware of, and I don't want to be selfish. I just looked at it yesterday, but I don't know if it worked because it doesn't have an elevator. But the old Cable Gallery is owned by- But the old label gallery is owned by N B I now, which is a top school business owned by uh multinational, multi, you know, it's a uh national company based out of Ohio. And um he's got a huge office space upstairs.
Second floor is Jenna, it's the old G Willikers though.
Yeah, he was gonna, he was gonna do, like, Chris put a bunch of money into it, he was gonna do.
It's beautiful.
Oh, it's. But and and but now their parent company doesn't want to do, he was gonna do an entertainment studio. He had old time booths in there, like in a bar, big cool place for like a wedding venue, right? Also be a cool place for like a loft, well, they don't want to develop it, they don't want to be in it, they'd like to lease it, it's a really cool spot. Super high ceilings and stuff like that, so, but no elevator access, stuff like that, so difficult.
Two-story?
Two-story, it's on the second floor, R C.
Old downstairs is manufacturing. And printing, so they're, you know, you don't know how the, the ventilation system works.
It's alcohol, it's a challenge, because originally I think they, Chris, and Mike Matoli, they were going to keep the business and then run that as a supplement. Like do as a supplement, well, you know, parent company with twenty locations around the United States isn't interested to do that. They wanna either permanently lease the building up with the space up there or, you know, find another solution, so.
But they're staying downstairs too.
They're staying downstairs, but it would take a lot of work over there, Martha, only because fences and they don't have a parking lot, it's all gravel, this, you know, this is a lot. If this would be a, we can work something out.
Yeah, no, they live in the square.
Multiple considerations.
For New York State, we'll never allow it, but downtown is what they want to do, certainly.
I would love that, the other person you should consider, Martha, just because in the spirit of everybody, Tyler Oliver and his family bought the community bank across the street. I know they originally were waiting to see what Paul did, because they were trying to be good neighbors, good stewards, because that's a bank, he could have moved his stuff, but they were taking work. They don't have an answer yet for that, but there's another potential location for you guys, it would work if you wanted to consider something about that, right downtown. I don't know what kind of space they have, it's two stories, Jenna's been in it, uh I don't know what kind of work it needs, but.
It needs to be.
It needs work, yeah, it means.
And it also.
Least amount of work, so.
It also has asbestos.
Yeah.
That would need to be encapsulated.
Okay, um superintendent summit, you guys, part of the challenge is to try to improve workforce on development here in the area. One big needs, four hundred kids graduate every year without a job. Uh only, they know, uh only forty percent of kids eighteen to twenty-four in Shenandoah County are enrolled in college. So where are all those kids, what do they do, and how do they get a job when they come out? We met with all nine superintendents from the county, which including obviously the Bosse superintendent, couple dozen local business leaders, including Taylor Zeno. And we talked about what's the gap, how come these kids are graduating for jobs that would require a high school diploma, but they're not getting hired when they come out of college? Two reasons, they don't know our high school, they don't know what those jobs are, they're not aware of them, and they're not qualified for them. They don't have the credentials or the training necessary, the experience, so how does a kid get experience? Here's the role for Morrisville, can we create micro credentials? I brought some people back in here, Taylor after the manufacturer, from manufacturer, and said, what would it take for you guys to interview and give a kid a chance out of high school? If he came to, what kind of, they said, if a kid could run a pallet jack, a forklift, pallet jacks hold from the kind you pump with your hand all the way to the one that ACO uses to pick the light, the guy stands on it. You don't do anything except ride around and grab stuff off the cords, the computers, they run by, cracks in the floor, right? So if you could get a kid trained in that, these two guys from Cary by now that I used, I know pretty well said, if they were pallet jack certified, I'd I'd give them a chance tomorrow. There's no, if they were, if they were safety certified, OSHA, A P I C S, all the other elements to go into a manufacturer. It shows they have the intentions, it shows they have the desire, it shows they have the need to be able to do that. Here's no, these are not, they're not talking about welding, that's Bosse's, that's a long-term technical training, a micro credential, something that they could pick up quickly. What about a micro credential in customer service? I used to run that for ACO, credit card handling, it's very specific, how you can take that number, can't write things down, how secure is a room activity, what needs to happen? How do you answer the phone, what are email etiquette? How do you, kids can't compose formal letters of communication, right? So how do you teach that customer service credential for mutual sense? I'd give a kid a chance tomorrow if they came in and knew how to do, and we could pass some proficiency or mastery. What's the role between Bosse's and Morrisville? So they're all in that same room talking to these business leaders saying, and by the way, that who's gonna teach them? You're gonna need business leaders to teach them, so that if you're not gonna have teachers, Scott Ryan, Tim Ryan, Maybridge, uh Rob Burson, Schubert says, we don't, we don't have teachers that can teach that. Well, Raymond says, I can do that, no, Morrisville says, I could deliver that remotely to everybody. Maybe those are classes kids take during their junior and senior year, the prep. What about one, I think about P A K, a construction module, kids that know how to measure, handle a tape, a lab, a all, a cheap wheelbarrow, has to spill stuff over the edges of floor. There's simple things you could teach kids, they would come out of there and say, hey, he passed a physical mastery of that test, now they go to work. Because kids think they're gonna go to work and drive the big trucks, they're not, they're gonna want them to do work, right? So how do you give the kids, and if only ten kids in the county graduated that mastery, it's ten kids that are gonna get a job at work tomorrow. So that's the kind of stuff we're trying to solve, um we're just scratching.
You're saying right now that the curriculum is just based on somebody that's gonna enter college and and go in that direction? I mean, it's so, it's the curriculum so rigid that these superintendents can't just immediately say, all right, we're gonna tweak it and we're gonna go, we're gonna work towards the technical side. So if somebody that sits on the school board and. We're constantly looking at things like that, we ask those same questions, right? So you you know, obviously, there's court courses and and the state dictates what what a student has to have to graduate from high school. And you have to try to fit those court courses in along with teacher contracts and hours and 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 all that good stuff. So one of the things you run into is, yes, we want to be able to teach kids how to use a a forklift, where do you fit it in, right? Um in between everything else, but what through trial and error and uh nudging by the state, who's starting to realize that, you know, maybe, maybe math and science are are important. Only up to a certain level, and then we need to start teaching kids um some some other skills, right? Uh the the steam and uh STEM programs are starting to become very important in schools. So to the the point, in Norwich, uh we built in a gigantic steam room into the building project, um that'll be multi-use. Uh we've put in an agricultural area in the uh courtyard of the school. Um they don't not only grow vegetables, but we're we're also planning on having livestock there. So things like that are starting to develop and it's it it's hard, but we're trial and error, right?
Yeah, and like the the truth of the matter is, this whole summit thing started because, you know, going to all the businesses when I first started, saying, hey, what's the need? They all said, job, I thought they meant like technical people, you know, and you know, they said, I need people to answer the phone, to put the product away, move the forklift. So then I literally went right to, I know a couple of superintendent, I know Scott Ryan and Tim Ryan really well, and I said, Jenna, is everybody going to college? And they said, no, no, it's quite the opposite, down to literally in Norwich, fifty-four percent, and it's worse in Vegas, worse or the same. Fifty-four percent of the kids in junior and senior, there's juniors and seniors, check the box that say probably or most likely not going to college, so.
Fifty-four percent.
Fifty-four percent, and 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 R C, forty percent don't. So where do they go? That's hundreds of kids, you sit there, and then forty, and then it gets worse, between eighteen and twenty-four, only forty percent of the kids in the county are enrolled in college. So where do they do it and how do we get them? And so make them more aware of the opportunity, so the the superintendents say, the world is changing, to Brian's point, that Route Twelve steam initiative, unfortunately, the person who was running it is no longer in Oxford. I met with Martha and a group of other people from Seaman and local business students, there's lots of things going on. Norwich doing stuff with M A C, Norwich has a program with Morrisville, where Morrisville teaches classes for college credits. They don't do it anyplace else in the county. Here's the other problem, that all those kids that go to Morrisville, every kid that takes those classes intends to go to college, ninety-nine percent of those kids that take those classes go to another college. They don't stay here in Morrisville. What what about, why don't we give this guy, I mean, Tom Pluski, super nice guy, access to the sixty percent that say, I'm not going to college? And say, well, our businesses say you need these skills, and he's willing to adapt his curriculum to say, I don't need to give out two-year degrees if this is what the community wants. I can give out micro credentials in a half a semester for business needs, businesses will pay for that. You can give micro credentials for, it's it's a.
Isn't that Bosse, Bosse, is that what you guys do?
Right in the middle of that, but more more training than that, Mike, and also, I'm not trying to speak for Martha, but my my experience has been, those kids are the same kids I'm talking about. Because it's not anymore where only a handful of kids that aren't gonna go, oh, a lot more kids than you might imagine go on to Bosse's. They're taking their core classes, that Bosse's does wonderful training, but that's not a micro credential, it's focused on a small set of skills, it's it's real. When you come out, you have a welding mastery, you know what I mean? Like you don't have the ability to learn more about welding, right? There's a.
That's like an apprentice, you're just describing an apprentice program, right?
Bosse's has a rule, because what is it called, not the, the career development program?
Career development. Career, that's nice, yeah, but we're for historic.
Say that again?
We are for historic, we're just reviewing that right now, I mean, we're still teaching auto mechanics, carburetors.
Carburetors, oh. In my back, in my back, as a friend, my nightingale on her door.
Well, we need to be on T V's, we need to be.
Airplane mechanics, fine.
We're teaching agriculture on a tractor that came from nineteen forty's, we need to be doing GPS and computer, it's all lovely, but.
And so here's the other one, Martha, that's all related, right? Pete Leonard, New Berlin mayor, uh the Brett Taylor, the New Berlin superintendent, New Berlin has forty thousand dollars in grant money set aside for kids that wanna go on and uh into the nursing field. And Chase Memorial needs tons of nurses, they're gonna try to set up a direct program right with Morrisville to help those kids that are graduating go right into nursing right there and be fully funded. There are ways to do this, right? You can spread the economy, help these kids get jobs, make the schools fully funded, and the superintendents, honestly, the new new person, Mike Julio, who's in, I really like him, he's trying hard to get his feet on the ground there. We got two, we're gonna have two interim superintendents in the county, one in Green, one in Oxford, so the southern part.
Watch out, it's gonna be, but can I share something that comes to mind to the end of presentation? This company is gonna be coming to Baybridge, they're gonna be doing those projects, it's not slotted until the fall of twenty twenty-four. I'm sitting with this new designation I got from A R C, I'm sitting on an opportunity to put a grant for four million dollars. To put a training station right there in Baybridge, train those kids from, you know, pour the jog and have them as a project work on that side. It will take forty rings of paper, but here's an opportunity to put kids to work on something that is new technology, that is local. But it, but that was my question, then it's gone, so, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
So then our kids will be either leaving to other installations, which is okay if they're local, otherwise, their job lasts after that. But if we could figure out how to take the same skills that are gonna be learned as solar installers to another industry where that's a winning card.
That's my update, Brian.
You're okay?
Thank you, Martha, and and I I think, yeah, we're fine, I should have updated this switch.
Okay.
Also, sorry, they switched. And the last thing I say is I presented our budget to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and it was approved, so we're 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 moving forward to finance.
Great. Okay, you answered the question. Moving on to pilots, uh back to the Smyrna solar project, um I know we had the verbiage as far as decommissioning was was somewhat generic, no. Let's face it, in in our layman minds, it was completely generic, um however, we kept being reassured by attorneys that we recovered, we recovered, we recovered, but we didn't want that. We wanted, we wanted uh solid verbiage um that said, you're going to get a decommissioning bond, not that you're financially stable. Um we wanted something very specific, uh so if you look at just paragraph, uh one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph down on the first page, uh is a good starting spot. Uh it's item number one, uh it talks about a decommissioning bond, some of the questions that were asked last time also were, well, geez, right now, it costs blah, blah, blah to decommission. Well, what happens fifteen, twenty years from now when costs are way up? Or uh is it still gonna be enough? Uh you know, you can see that there's there's a building of a hundred and fifty percent of the project, um which gives you a fifty percent increase over that time. Um you you know, it goes on to 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 talk about decommissioning divine, triggering events of decommissioning, so on and so forth. Um but I I really think that first paragraph is where we had most of our questions, and that's where it's now been solidified. The only thing missing missing from there is a dollar amount, and I'm not sure how we've come up with that dollar amount, and that was another question we had is, you know, where do we get that?
Yeah, who do you, how do you activate, how what?
Are you asking about the dollar amount, whatever it costs to decommission? Wouldn't they provide that, and we would have an engineer stamp that? They should, and they shouldn't be up to us to decide what it's gonna cost to take their equipment.
And I think we're gonna have some, we would probably, to Mike's point, want something that we could verify. So we want somebody independent to, at their expense, tell us how much would it cost, and I don't think we should incur the expenses, like we do when it does go through, right? So I think if they wanna do this, Jenna, I think we should require this company, that the board's okay, just suggesting, that we require this company to find out and show us with somebody independent, how much it would cost to decommission a solar field of this size with this many panels in this state, and then we go from there.
We can actually compare it to other decommissioning plans in a three-megawatt.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good, okay, that's a good point.
I mean, most, most of these projects are pretty much cookie cutter.
That's right.
By and large.
They would go there.
Um although, I mean, the verbiage in in the agreement does say that, you know, the cost removal cost, estimating removal cost to decommission a project as determined by the company and the town engineering consultant.
So that's the.
The reason.
That's the company and whoever the town engineering consultant.
Right, and what what local laws are providing now is a one percent, which we don't have in place because our project happened before, we got a law in place. But a one percent fee would be paid to town, so the Smyrna uh project is ten million dollars, so we would get a hundred thousand dollars, that's where that money would come from. In this case, I don't have the, I don't have that fee to pay. We we. For a town engineer, but.
So the idea is, well, the idea is quite, the idea, the idea is quite the one percent, because the idea won't pay that consultant's fee to work with.
If you get the one percent, that'd be the purpose of that, for an oversight engineer.
Yeah, this is specific town engineering, town.
Right.
Do we have one, I guess, so you have to town, we have to hire.
No, it would be a contract.
Right, and we would have, right, so that's how you could do it that way.
You may want to take town. I'm assuming so, it could be a little bit clunky if there were differing opinions on the town's consultant, the town's hired consultant.
Right, are you looking more for an independent assessment?
So could we, could we change the language?
I think that's for sure.
Yeah, we can take that out and make the language appropriate that you guys see, so some form of.
If they were simply engineering consultant, then it does maybe allow a little bit of wiggle room.
And maybe some negotiations.
How and where that consultant comes from.
They have a pro test, and we don't think this is fair because this engineer has no background in solar, then I got here, well, we can.
Do you wanna just, do you just want to make the requirement provided by the company? Because then the I D A work can verify, you can tell me to do it, go get the Steve Harris, go compare it to the other cookie cutter one. But this way, we don't have to hire a consultant or incur any costs, right? Unless unless you gotta want.
We're we're fine. So as we get more and more of these, like you said, we would have multiple decommission contracts to compare numbers with.
Right.
I don't think we'd need to go pay an engineer consultant to see if that that dollar amount's in the ballpark. Um so I don't, I think we can take that out altogether.
I would be, yes, I I tend to agree, Brian, because down the road, you may, the first couple, maybe you wanna do that where it says, says it in here or not.
Yeah, whether it says it or not, you may wanna get, right, we may wanna get.
Why would be the detriment of just going by a percentage that is used by other I D As and that we we wouldn't have to be worried about, you don't think it would apply?
I don't know, Martha.
We could do, we could do research against other I D As that have decommissioning agreements and see what they're getting on similar projects, um.
I just don't.
Yeah, but I I think we, in this case, because it's one of the first couple where we've really required this 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 new specific.
I would put one more guy in.
I I think it would behoove us to have us hire an engineer and say, does this look right?
I would, I might suggest, and you, Brian, to your point, for now, is to say, the reason why I think, Martha, you wanna do, have the company do one all the time and have that be required, like. And have that be required, like in this agreement, and then us decide would we want to consult or not? Is, is if you get some wild variation, because you may have these things as we move forward with the county and stuff. You, you, they're going to be in odd spots, whether it's on a flat spot in Bainbridge that's easily accessible. Decommissioning sixteen acres where everything's exactly the same is going to be less expensive than decommissioning sixteen acres in Woffenac. Right? I think. So that's why I think we want to, I think we want them to fund it. And then I think we want to decide, do we want to get a consultant director? Because we'll get the one percent at the next point. And at the beginning, you guys are saying, this is a little one, let's try it.
But anyway, mine describes it as correct, because it's, it's so new. But going forward, there's three, three towns up on the north side of the county that have that stipulation in place to the local law. So the IDA can actually say, it's already done, the town's already done the, the review, we'll just, we'll review their review.
That makes sense.
And you actually using Bainbridge as an example, there's four that are literally right next to each other. So I would assume if there's one number works for one, it's going to work for all.
I would, I would think so. I would think so. Yep. So do you guys, do we want to change the language in there that says, we won't require a consultant, we require the company to provide us with an estimate of the decommissioning. And then we'll verify it afterwards. We don't have to put that in.
So just remove.
Lawyers to change that, Jenna?
Just remove the, and town engineering consultant.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. And then in the meantime, I'll try to figure out who is it, somebody that, I'll talk to Steve Harris. He might go to tell me who's somebody that could, we could hire as a consultant. So I think he might have that connection.
Um, so what do we need to do? So we keep holding this up month after month after month. Can we make a motion that with those changes we move forward?
As long as, I mean, the only thing that would hold it up would be the price, as long as you're okay with that price plus a hundred and fifty percent, then yes, then we can move forward with it.
So I guess we can't approve anything until we see the dollar amount.
Yes.
But I, I guess, keep pushing for it.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll get, I'll take that out and then also work with Sal to get the.
Can we approve the leaseback agreement?
That, yeah, that's up to you guys. You are more than welcome to approve that. That's why they provided it. So we can take a look at it.
Yeah. And then Jenna, so once, when Martha says move that out, please, please, as an action, I call, you know, call these guys and let them know, hey, first, can we get to determine that we, we need those kids made of that? Can we get these guys, we, we scream if they're paid. Let them know and write and copy me and email, I need to tell you that we want them to get a decommissioning. As, that, to move this project forward as quickly as possible, they can, if they can provide us with a decommissioning expense for this site, um, it, it will help us.
Okay.
And, and then I'll get back and go with Steve Harris. And in the meantime, I'll ask him to see if that seems reasonable, if he has that knowledge. Or does he know of a consultant that I can work with? And you guys are okay with me working with them?
So I do need a motion to approve the leaseback agreement?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. Need a second? Woodford's side. Right. Uh, any discussion? Very none, will blow?
Cory.
Ryan. You want?
Woodford, I. Bert, not. Great. Okay, new business, Bainbridge solar project. Uh, so we had to present the presentation by Tim. Um, Jenna, Sal and I got this about a week before you guys got to look at it. Um, we had some clarifications and questions right off the get-go, because you had four applications that looked almost exactly the same with almost exact dollar numbers in there. Uh, our question was, is the total cost of the project eleven million dollars? Or is each of these an individual application with a project cost of eleven million dollars per? Clarification provided that it is four separate solar build outs with, that'll cost eleven million dollars per. So one of the biggest asks that, that they've made, they've made two specific asks at this point. One of them is instead of paying a one percent fee, they would like that cut to a half a percent due to the size of each project being eleven million dollars. You're talking forty-four billion dollars. Essentially, our fee would be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars at that one percent. Uh, half of that, obviously, you don't do math, would be two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, still pretty good, uh, admin fee on top of that. Um, the other ask is they want a twenty-year pilot on, on this, on all four projects. So discussion.
What is that? You kept saying, right?
It says we can go, we changed it, that it could be up to twenty years. Yep. Is that, it did say twenty years before, which basically meant we had to go twenty years.
Didn't we discuss about the long-term projects being challenging because the equipment can actually break down and, and companies may sell and.
I guess the decommission.
There were a lot of ramifications about, um, the longer term. Did we want to discuss that?
Yeah, I, I think some of the things that came up too is a lack of data to tell you exactly how long these things are going. Is there, if there's information where you could just say, here it is, here's the art, here are the facts, these are how long these go for. Um, I know I've heard that there are co, like, efficiency standards that drop after so many years, but.
That's where you almost need that engineer to really tell you. So I'm not qualified. All I know is that, um, I hate to set a precedent, it's just my opinion on it. So I'm, I'm a little tight around these solars in most, so, because I find that it takes its toll and it's not creating jobs, which I know you focus on. Um, so I lean toward, uh, a tighter span because I, unless they can show us, it always seems like it's up to us to determine how long these things last instead of them giving us the data. That, and I hate to set a precedent, if somebody wants to cookie cutter just some divided fraction of a project so they can negotiate a, it's not, you know, it's to their advantage that they split this up. They're gaining.
Yeah, they get.
They're gaining more grants. They're going to get qualifying for more. I mean, is it really up to us to, to underwrite that? I think we're underwriting enough as years.
Well, that's my point though. I'm like, I think just by input, I happen to, I don't understand why. I'm going to cut it into different pieces. As far as a giving them half, uh, why would we give them anything? Because honestly, I'm going to speak clearly, none of this money is staying in, the profits aren't even staying in the country. Money's going to the Netherlands.
Yes.
The money, the, the jobs, it's only, it's only ten percent of the total cost of these projects. Up to ten percent of the total cost. That's what they're proving to do, right? They can prove that easily, just transportation, lodging, different expenses associated with it. So that's nothing. So to me, that, there, I don't believe there's not a lot of profits because they're paying a lot of money for a DC condemned land. So there must be profit in it, right? Because it's been sitting there bad. Question on how long do they last? Well, if we can get four hundred thousand dollars for, what is it, a year, Brian? Four hundred thousand dollars, life is one time, whatever they administer. I'm not as concerned with how long they last, as long as they don't violate our UCA, as long as we have that decommissioning policy, right? If they only last fifteen years, who cares? They still have to clean it up as soon as they're, as soon as they're not using it, right? As soon as it's, no, so we're protected and the county still gets the money for the length of the pilot.
That's why I agree with my.
So as long as you're protecting, that's just my opinion, right? I'm, as long as you have a decommission bond and as long as we're not saying forty years, or do you know what I mean? As long as it's living the rep, I don't know, I don't know, especially on this one where I don't know a better use for the property.
I, I've found this, it's been a long time, but I mean, literally you could smell PCBs.
Oh.
Um, yeah.
So nothing.
Um, and parts of this are what they use called boneyard, and that's the PCB area. Um, yeah, so I, it's, it's probably a good adaptive reuse for the property along with the, you know, that complies with the deed restrictions. There's not a lot of other options.
Why give them a break?
But with that said, with that said, I mean, it, it very, in total, in my opinion, some of these solar projects very, only a little bit meet the objectives of what an IDA is for. Uh, you know, they're guesstimating fifty percent of the power will be used in Shenandoah County, but, but that's, that's nothing more than a guess. That was a great question to ask. And, um, so yeah, I'm, I'm not really in a bargaining with you.
Because they're not fifty percent. You know what that is? That's like if they opt, you know, you guys all get those things in the mail, sign up for this, sign up for that. So they're doing math like this X number of people in the county and one percent of one percent checks the box. That's really, that's not true. You know what I mean? So, because it's not directed like you guys were looking at with the Cadian, like, where it's directed to stay, where the county mandates it, right? This is on the grid and we know most of that goes downstairs. So I don't know why we give them for, plus it's not even like United States-based economy. I mean, I don't, so we're.
We're, we're, we're approaching probably executive session conversation here at this point.
Okay.
Um, getting into pure contract negotiations and why and why not?
Right, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. Uh, because that's the discussion we want to have, right? Um, but now that we're, we're really getting into the nitty gritty, uh.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I'd like a motion before executive session.
I'd second.
Okay. Um, we will expect to take, potentially take action when coming out of executive session?
So you want us to come back in again, right?
It, it, we, we have to.
Okay. Well, the other, and I would say before you go into executive session, we did discuss about, right? Was the town and the village seem to support this. And I think that that's an important factor.
Right.
So when the town and the village support it, it's different when the IDA is saying, hey, we support it because it's good for the jobs and really doesn't do that. Like that's, like an, I'm giving my opinion. I've always been pretty supportive when you say, does this benefit the county? Does this benefit, so we're tough on them, right? But so, so especially when it feels like we're kind of being asked to do it instead of the town planning board instead of.
Executive session.
Yeah. All right.
Cory.
Ryan. Zeno.
Woodford. Bert.